All right. The county attorney general's now in session. The honorable Speaker Todd Bult is out. Please remove all hats and turn all cell phones and papers off, please.
All right, we'll call. And if we could, if we can have Commissioner Hensley, would you please lead us in prayer, please, sir?
Dear Lord, we thank you for, first of all, for the death, burial, resurrection of Jesus. Pray, Lord, that anyone out there that don't know of Jesus, they will come to know him before too late. Pray, Lord, that you will be with us during this meeting as we have difficult decisions to be made. And pray, Lord, you'll lead us and direct us through those. Would pray for all those that are sick, hurt, injured, can't be here. Lift them up to you, Lord, pray for healing for those. And just pray for each one as we leave here tonight. Lord, put a hedge protection over us, and we'll thank you for that. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Mr. Jefferson, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we see. Madam Clark, would you please have a little call, please?
Bailey?
Here.
Harper? Dever?
Here.
Gillum?
Here.
Granton?
Here.
Hensley?
Here.
Jenkins?
Here.
Kenmore?
Here.
Lake?
Here.
Lanier?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Oak?
Same?
Here.
Biggers?
Here.
Wayne?
Here.
All right, will please look in your packet here and see if it may explain the part of the county legislative body on our last session, maybe sixteen. You have a chance to review those, please. Motion, second. Motion, second. Discussion. Saying those all certified, approve the minutes, please say aye. We did have some special peers with us tonight, just want to recognize them out there. American City Council City Councilors are all here with us tonight, and glad to see you, thank you for coming tonight. Let's move into our county officials' reports, please. Dr. Smith, do you have anything for us tonight, please, ma'am?
Good evening. We have the three items from today. The first item, staple set of papers, these are several amendments we have to the 2023 fiscal year. This is just to clean up all of our budgets so that we can close the books. I'll highlight some of these. The first one is the COPS grant we received. Basically, we brought this to you last fall because it just got delayed because of COVID. They had given us an amount that it'd be. It ended up being about thirty, forty thousand dollars, actually a lot more than that. We had twenty-five percent match on it, so we had to pull funds out of fund balance to pay match on that. That put intercons and camera systems in four of our stores. So that was a very grand, and we're just wrapping it up. The next section is cafeteria budget. That's cleaning all that up for this year. The next one is maintenance improvement with our spend department. We had to move some money around there to make sure that was met. On the second page, student services, we have someone retiring, have to pay out their vacation days. We weren't anticipating that when we made the budget last year, so that moves that, that part of it. Trustees' commission, more state funds this year have allowed her to take, give more income, so we're showing we're moving that money over to her. And the last one is maintenance, we had to make some adjustments there. But because we were doing spray for COVID at the beginning of the year, this continued that, so we're doing some adjustments there to accommodate those. So those are the amendments that clear everything up on our 2023 fiscal year budget. The next one is the cafeteria budget. I'm kind of going to vote on these. But I mean, that's fine, sir.
I would say individually. I would maybe for the cafeteria.
You can go to Oliver. The next single sheet you have is our cafeteria budget for 2023-2024. This is food costs have increased, personnel have increased, and a lot of government options right now makes it fifty dollars an hour. Our cafeteria people are not making that. We're trying to get them closer to that. So there is a deficit on this, but that particular fund has a fund balance that can cover. And the last item we have is our 2023-2024 general purpose budget that we presented last month. We were working with early property tax reappraisal numbers because of the adjustments. I think you guys worked with one lighter one. It was about fifty thousand dollar difference, but we can make that up. We're trying to work with that, so just a second, reading on that budget.
Any questions, Mr. Dr. Smith? And I think these, the board's already approved these.
Yes.
So they've already been approved. We could take these individually or altogether. I think it'd be appropriate to take them all together. If so, would that be a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And motion been made, proper, the second. Any discussion? Saying aye, Madam Clark, I would like to have a little call, please.
Bailey?
Yes.
Dever?
Yes.
Gillum?
Yes.
Granton?
Yes.
Hensley?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Kenmore?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Lanier?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Same?
Yes.
Biggers?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Yes, and we do have some notaries. And too, let me say, thank you, Dr. Smith, for the work that you do, the school board. We support our public education, and I'm proud of all the school system, and we support y'all. And thank you, I know it's not easy. My brother was teacher for many years, so thank you for what you do. We do have listed notaries that was put up here earlier. If you had a chance to look at those.
So moved, please.
Moving, second. Any discussion on those? Saying aye, all those certified, saying aye. All opposed, like aye? All right, we got that. Mr. Swift?
Good evening. I really don't have anything here if y'all have any, if there's any discussion on the budget. If you, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer those. If not, I don't know anything.
Any changes? You had no changes, putting words. Casey, what was that, Danny, only the, only the 1.5?
I would point out, Sam, according to Levitt, talk today, he has nothing in front of us. He has some subcontract, like sidewalks and concrete work, give them a city, but it's as soon as they get that number on start, it'll be able to resurface. From Bob left, they're gonna start making the crossroads and come back.
Anything, is anything from?
It wasn't, it wasn't in plan, so I don't know, it might have been later on, but I know it's just gonna be back to the courthouse.
I haven't heard that today, if I didn't check on it, so sometime later on, or probably August or something.
Probably, probably starting before August. So I don't know, it depends on when something comes up from the on hand, but right now, he said he has nothing in front of him.
Okay, good. Any questions, Mr. Swift?
It's 1.5, not going to be first?
Yeah, they're all started, man.
Yeah, I was going to say, I don't know what they've done.
Yeah, but PRI is doing it, not standard, they, they don't have standard construction going on, about south. PRI is doing 1.5. They're doing like a W micro, it's just, I was gonna say, 1.5 south would be straight asphalt.
All right, any other questions?
Oh, Pat Harcourt said, I talked to him, he said that it's going to be one of the contracts initially, like that, so.
Okay.
We're just gonna have one of the.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Swift.
Thank y'all.
Yes, sir. The young PRI, thank you, we have to talk to these bodies sometimes, they fluctuate. All right, and if Commissioner, if you would, please pull over down, and we're talking. Josh Jankin? Ms. Allen, you have anything for us tonight?
Machine is supposed to arrive next week, and like I said, I'm just trying to find out what's going on in the building, what we're gonna do.
Sheriff, how about your report, sir?
I've got the letter, letter of report for this month. This month, we have picked up seven thousand nine hundred and sixty pounds of garbage. That was as of last Friday. Year to date, we picked up one hundred and twenty-six thousand four hundred pounds in accounting. So pretty good picking up garbage.
Yes, sir, that's incorrect.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. General movies, committee reports. Commissioner Williams, stand up. They do have some great some improvements. They have science value.
Still walking to the library.
Support you, support the library. Anything on the buildings, to me? All right, anything? Let's say Court Butler's not here for it all, unfortunately. Ms. Miller, do you have anything for our evidence report tonight? Let's move into our, we have our final.
Sir? Yes, sir. I'd like to speak, I have an audit meeting.
Oh, Mr. Good, yes, sir. How can I get that?
Quickly, we're previous as far as the audit committee's responsibilities. Audit committee's responsibilities include the following three areas. Annual financial audit oversight, county internal control system oversight, establishment and maintenance of a system for the confidential recording of suspected illegal improper wasteful or fraudulent activity within the government. Specifically, the audit committee has reviewed the county's annual audit report for fiscal 2022, reviewed the audit findings and recommendations, reviewed management's proposed corrective actions, reviewed instances of reported deficiencies and weaknesses in internal control, discussed internal control system improvements and possible solutions, and discussed options for establishing and monitoring a hotline for reporting fraud, waste, and improper use of county resources. The audit committee concurred on management's proposed corrective actions as listed in the 2022 annual financial audit report, but to date has not confirmed implementation as occurred. The audit committee by email has requested that each county office with fiscal 2022 audit report findings submitted out there to the audit committee describe corrective actions taken during fiscal 2023. Responses were requested by June 30th, 2023. Strategies for strengthening, strengthening the county's system of internal controls will be formulated by the audit committee and communicated to management for its consideration in the coming weeks. Discussion of options for establishing and monitoring that hotline will continue. Also, at y'all's desk, I laid out a summary of the 2022 audit findings. It was a total of twelve findings for the county. I did a little research out of the ninety-one counties in Tennessee. Each, there's an average of three point three eight findings per county, but gives you an idea of where we stand with twelve. Thank you.
Commissioner, you have a last question. Have you received all the boards from all the, all the departments?
Good question. I have received two out of the five. I've received trustee, and I've received director of schools. I'm still looking for highway superintendent, the county mayor's office, and the sheriff's department. Thank you, thank you.
Madam is complete, uh, collection, that's completely, we have to, some of those on the audit findings were, um, before we took office, we had a new commission. Some of them were dealing with the, um, one of the issue of, like, one of them was at the landfill. We dealt with that since the new legislative body came in, we had to do the corrective action from the state. So, you know, that's on there as well. So those have already been corrected. Just getting, would you have anything on management?
No, I don't, Mr. Brady, I think it's more.
And we do not want to leave anyone out that day. I just saw Jamie, do you have anything, or report anything for our, uh, county, please, sir? I apologize, I didn't actually see that there.
I would say anything, I just thought I'd give y'all the numbers for main. Total calls was two oh seven, transports one seventy-eight. We had three in common emergency, one sixty-five emergency. Out of all our transports, sixty-one to Baller General, fifty-five to Jackson General, twelve to Memphis, to thirteen Magnolia, provided mutual aid for Fayette County boys, and sixty-four for nine. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Any questions?
Quick question. Do we still have an ambulance in this?
Uh, not right now, we do not. We don't have the people to cover all that. We're down to run two trucks. Basically, we lost almost a fair part of our call volume, and so to try to match with our budget, we dropped down to two trucks a day. And sales were only about twelve percent of our calls are in that area. Seventy percent of our, our footy down.
Any other questions, Mr. Gray?
Thank you, sir, appreciate you pretty much.
All right.
The budget committee has met several times in the last couple of months. A lot of budget amendments this last meeting in your packet, they should be separated. One section starts with one, ends with thirty-four in those specific order. And there was one, those were all approved by the budget committee with no need to go to full commission. There was one change to number thirty-three. There was not a debit credit balance. The debit was entered at one twenty on travel, we changed that to one twenty to one hundred and twenty-five dollars to make a debit credit balance. So all of those were approved by the budget committee, no need to go to full commission. And then the second section starts with number three. And if anybody has a question, just stop and take this as they come. There were a couple of changes in these that did not make it back to the full commission. I'm not sure exactly what line item is, but when I get to, I will explain. Number three, juvenile services, debiting fund balance fifty dollars, credit to postal charges fifty dollars, reason the original budget not calculated correctly. Number twelve, general sessions court, debiting fund balance one thousand seven hundred and fifty-five dollars, credit to state retirement one thousand seven hundred and fifty-five dollars, reason the original budget not calculated correctly. Number fourteen, juvenile court, debiting fund balance two thousand three hundred and fifty-six dollars, credit in travel two thousand three hundred and fifty-six dollars, same reason, original budget not calculated correctly. Number fifteen, Chancery Court, debiting fund balance three thousand five hundred and thirty-one dollars, credit in social security one thousand nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars, state retirement one thousand six hundred and three dollars for a debit credit total of three thousand five hundred and thirty-one dollars, same reason. Number seventeen, dental health program. And I believe they deferred this one because of salary line items, debiting medical personnel seven thousand seven hundred and sixty-six dollars, credit in clerical personnel six thousand five hundred dollars, state retirement one thousand two hundred and fifteen dollars, and liability insurance fifty-one dollars, reason to correctly allocate expenses. Number eighteen, animal control, debiting fund balance seven thousand seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents, credited part-time personnel forty-three hundred, social security nine hundred and ninety-three, employee insurance one thousand three twenty-eight, employer Medicare at three seventy, travel eighteen dollars and twenty-five cents, animal food supplies seven fifty, and other charges eight dollars for a debit credit total of seven thousand seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents. Reasons added additional part-time personnel, animal control took too much money, health insurance on previous budget amendment, deemed to complete fiscal year expenditures. Nineteen, special patrols, debiting fund balance eight thousand four hundred and fifty-five dollars, credit in deputies six thousand fifty-five dollars, social security six hundred and twenty dollars, state retirement four hundred and fifty dollars, and employee insurance one thousand three hundred and thirty dollars for a debit credit total of eight thousand four fifty-five to correctly allocate expenses as the reasoning. Number twenty, civil defense, debiting insurance recoveries eight thousand five hundred, credit in communications eight thousand five hundred, debiting fund balance nine hundred and sixty dollars, credit in other charges nine hundred and sixty dollars, reason to replace the tower damaged by the storm and to add additional amount to account five ninety-nine for a debit credit total of nine thousand four sixty. Number twenty-four, and this is one that was amended in the, in the mayor's office, but we did not get the amended form. This is the workout, the debit is fifty-two thousand two forty-five forty-three, and insurance of twenty thousand for a total of seventy-two two forty-five forty-three. The credits are medical personnel twenty-nine seventy-seven, maintenance personnel two hundred, social security twelve hundred, unemployment thirty, Medicare two fifty, communication three hundred, electricity fifty thousand, and food supplies two thousand, and building improvements fifteen thousand two eighty-eight forty-three. And this was amended to end up being a line item transfer. I believe there was room in guards and one other line item. So none of that amount kept from that. Twenty-five is election commission, debiting fund balance two hundred and eighty-nine thousand five hundred and forty-six dollars, credit in state retirement one thousand four hundred and five, other contracted services two forty-five, and office equipment two hundred and eighty-seven thousand eight ninety-six for a debit credit total of two eighty-nine five forty-six. The new election booth's upcoming June twenty-eighth will be a hundred percent ringed first in the next fiscal year in July. And the others are just transposed. I won't explain that well. Twenty-six, civil defense, debiting fund balance nine thousand six hundred and sixty dollars, credit in communication eighty-six hundred, office supply of one hundred, and other charge is nine sixty for a debit credit total of nine thousand six sixty. Uh, adding money to lines to keep from being over budget, money from insurance recovery to being used to fund the communication line. Twenty-seven, other public safety, debiting fund balance, fifty million. Credit in contracts with government agencies, fifty million, and that is core civic funds passed through. Uh, twenty-eight animal control, debiting fund balance, eight thousand fifty-nine, twenty-five. Alright, a little clarification on this one. Number twenty-eight is gonna take the place of eighteen. A lot of those amounts are the same, so twenty-eight's taking the place of eighteen. Number twenty-eight is animal control. Uh, debiting fund balance, eight thousand fifty-nine, twenty-five versus the original seventy-seven, sixty-seven, twenty-five. Uh, still credit in part-time personnel, forty-three hundred, social security, nine ninety-three, employee insurance, thirteen twenty-eight. Medicare, three seventy, travel, eighteen twenty-five, communication, two hundred. Animal food supplies, seven fifty, and other supplies and materials, a hundred dollars for a debit credit total of eight thousand fifty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents. And then number twenty-nine, last one. Uh, ambulance department, and this is the other one that was corrected. This debit amount, uh, did not come from fund balance. It came from, did it come all from attendance? Uh, but the debit was sixty-nine thousand nine hundred, credit in clerical personnel, one thousand. Overtime pay, thirty-seven thousand, social security, fifteen hundred, state retirement, ten thousand, Medicare, nine hundred. Maintenance repair services, a thousand, maintenance and repair services, equipment, four thousand, drugs and medical supplies, twenty-five hundred. Uh, gas, seven thousand, uniforms, three thousand, and utilities, two thousand for a debit credit total of sixty-nine thousand nine hundred. And that was just, uh, moving money from lives to keep from being over budget and money from insurance recovery being used to fund the communication line.
Mr. Johnson?
This is her.
What line item was that again, or what account was that? It's not, it wasn't the fund out that you said.
Uh, attendance.
Thanks.
And all of these, uh, were approved by the budget committee. We said changes on the June the thirteenth.
With these on it, does seem like a lot of it during the year. They have a lot of these, this is permission from both, in your set of years, they have some to clean up, uh, from different line items. Travel, which is full, uh, Medicare, um, a lot of these are cleaning up items, so, um. May I have any questions for, uh, Commissioner Mayor? If not, we'll be entitled to motion to approve our budget amendments, please.
So.
Sir.
First and second, any discussion on the amendments, please. See done, when we move into a roll call, global please, time clerk.
Vail?
Yes.
Debarry?
Yes.
Gillum?
Yes.
Granton?
Yes.
Ensign?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Kellmore?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Lanier?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Sane?
Yes.
Bickers?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes. As you'll see next on the agenda, we have resolutions here for tax levy, uh, nonprofit, and appropriations. If you'll see those, please. Of course, everyone is aware, we have had reappraisal. And we have a suggested rate from the state. And that rate, as you will see before you, is one point eight one zero two. And you'll see how the resolution is fixing the tax levy department, and that's it, but you'll begin July the first, twenty twenty-three. Uh, what they entail, it's had to be the general fund, then the general purpose school fund, and the debt service fund. But the total overall revenue, um, it was at two five five, and it came down to one point eight one oh two.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
You got a copy of that, or I'll, I'll say a copy here.
So you have it?
We do, yeah. We don't have that.
For your, for the tax levies.
The resolution?
Let me read this from the Tennessee Council of the Trade. Good lead. Says regarding the certified tax rate of Harden County, uh, we concur to the counteration of the county tax rate, one point eight one zero two. The county may proceed to formally determine certified tax rate and adopt the tax rate, the actual rate will not exceed the certified tax rate and determine. Now, if that rate, one point eight one, that's what they're suggesting. If we exceed that rate, you have to have a public hearing, and that would be, uh, has to be advertised in the paper. But that's the rate that they suggested that it go to now, since the reappraisal came in. And if we adopt that, that will be our new rate, one point eight one oh two.
God, the state's saying that is revenue neutral, correct? Is that, Mr. Chair, is that something we had to go on tonight before we pass the new budget?
I would, I would suggest that yes, for the resolution, so we'll go into a bit, you know, for our new, for the fiscal year. I mean, Mayor, we will have a resolution. A resolution. Let me see, let's move over to a different item, Mark, just to create a, can you, uh, get these topics here, please? We have one for the appropriations to the nonprofit, and then we have the actual resolution that lists, uh, where each department is. And that is taken from our budget, so that we get these two, first to hear, we'll make a copy, so it might, you have all three of those resolutions, please. Alright, while she's here, let me, uh, let me move on here to, uh, next time, the ARAMID contract we're doing. This is a service, um. Yeah, you may have that. Did you have any to package that, Commissioner?
Yeah.
This one is currently in place, and they are, um, wanting to renew that through ARAMID, uh, for our ambulance, uh, for our ambulance departments. It's actually in the budget to be paid out of the ambulance department. I'm not sure how long that has been in place, about several years. Y'all have any questions on that? I think that's a good service that we have to be doing. And we just renewed that.
It's the same, same amount.
The same amount as it was, sixty-seven five eighty-five, yeah.
So we have to renew this every year in June?
Can you get a motion on that, sir?
If we could, please.
So.
Second.
On the first and second. Any questions on the motion to approve the ARAMID care? See, you don't need to have a roll call over that, but.
I've got, I've got, I've got a question. Do we have any kind of status for the helicopter emergency service ride?
Right.
That the county's paying for? Do we, do we have any idea how often it's been used, or what that winds up costing the county per?
Well, we're in this, when we're in this network, we pay the fee, and it's available. Um, I don't know actually how many, um, patients they have picked up over the last year.
A lot.
I do know it was picked up, um, a couple of weeks ago.
It was a lot.
They had an issue in Pickford Valley, and they had to fly around. But I know it is huge, and I think it's, I think it's very important.
So it's for the, but it's for the county employees only, the, I'm not county, no, county, uh, county, uh.
Residents.
Residents only.
Yes.
And it's only if it happens within the county board, correct?
Yes, yes, that's right, that's correct. Alright, now, if we could have a roll call over here, and this is just renewing the current contract that we have.
Vail?
Yes.
But, uh, Debarry's?
Yes.
Gillum?
Yes.
Granton?
Yes.
Ensign?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Kellmore?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Lanier?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Sane?
Yes.
Bickers?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes. Alright, if, uh, if I will, we'll, Chris, if you will, if you will, Commissioner Graham, you have a discussion in the, uh, West Tennessee Medical Center.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I'll try to be brief on this, but, uh, it, it comes to my attention that, um, West Tennessee Medical Center is probably going to establish a lot of footprint here in Harden County, uh, Oliver specifically. Um, I think the talks are about bringing in a, uh, new health center that will involve a ambulance service and eventually a hospital hospital. Uh, with that being said, I thought it might be good to bring to the attention of the commissioners tonight and the folks of Harden County for discussion. Not looking for the, uh, motions to lie or, or movements on this, but discussion about our ambulance service versus West Tennessee. And, uh, plus the pros and cons of, uh, of each, uh, you know, one, one of the pros, of course, if we was to change it to a part-time company, would be our, um, liability would be removed from the county that we have, uh, running a part-time county ambulance service. Uh, there's a lot of talking about, I know, to discuss, and, um, just coming into that topic, I thought it might be worth pointing, pointing out, having a discussion on this. I'm not from the EMS committee, so I'm not privy to a lot of the questions that's been talked about, about, uh, West Tennessee, Tennessee. I know that Oliver has been under the service of West Tennessee for the past year, and I don't know how, what their experience is, so. Tonight, I did ask, uh, Mayor Tizit, if he would share his experience and the city's experience with, uh, West Tennessee Medical, and give us some insight. Um, well, I thought, I got a question, you know, why did we separate, why did city bonders separate from, uh, from the ambulance service that we provided? Just a lot of questions out there. I hope everybody joins in with, uh, with this discussion, and, uh, we can kind of make some decisions based on this. Mayor, Mayor, Tizit, would you, why didn't the city bond?
Welcome, Mayor. Alright. Well, I say good, I'm, say good evening to everybody, uh, thank y'all for this time. I wish y'all was here on other circumstances, uh, to sort of give you, got some notes on the topic. I, I, I don't want to take up a lot of time, but at the same time, I'll say, we, it's a sense of urgency that needs to be had on the matter of EMS in the county. Um, and I'm not sure what, commissioners know what, uh, but to answer your question, Commissioner, uh, Granton. We've, we've been with West Tennessee Healthcare a year and a half now, and we started this discussion, uh, about two, two and a half years ago. Uh, about EMS coverage in the county and the lack of EMS coverage. We got, we're getting multiple calls of there being not enough EMS, uh, given available. And I prefer by saying that we have ten ambulances, one day we're gonna need eleven. I don't care how many, you can't have too many. Uh, but we started that conversation, uh, just because of the lack of coverage, uh, that was then, that, that we had in the city. And so we reached out to West Tennessee Healthcare, and that was in October, uh, eighteen, they came, our city council, we presented CAREMADE, as well as West Tennessee Healthcare, presented proposals to us to provide EMS service in the city when it's involved. We then taken action at that meeting. Some of you guys will hear from y'all, we, we then taken action in that meeting in October at our council meeting. Uh, we talked, we basically made a decision, the council made the decision, that I would come to this county commissioner, explain to the commissioner what we were about to do, because as we all knew, us taking on EMS service in the city would take, we projected about, say, we, West Tennessee Healthcare projected about sixty percent of our revenue from the county. We didn't want to do anything to hurt the county, but at the same time, we had the opportunity to have a contract, say, that would be one and a half units, which would be one twenty-four hour unit, one twelve hour unit. Uh, so, and they were going to provide that to us for the job. So I came to this body and basically presented that, uh, and asked this body what they, what you guys wanted to do, and y'all chose to take no action, to leave it like it was, and you want to continue to provide coverage. Harder the county would continue to do what they were doing, and basically you told me, you do what you want to do with the city. So in November, we came, I mean, December, we came back, we signed, uh, uh, passed an agreement, signed the contract January one. Since West Tennessee Healthcare has been here, they have, um, they not, they exceeded their contract. They, the contract requires one twenty-four hour, one twelve hour. They have always kept two, two twenty-four hour units in this, uh, in the city, and they've also, uh, added a transport, man, or bus, or whatever it's called, does transport back into hospital. So sometimes there's three units in the county that rotate in and out. Um, and I'll tell you, there's, there's times that the county comes and we, 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 uh, do mutual aid to the city, I mean, so the county, the county does mutual aid, vice versa. But since the West Tennessee Healthcare has been involved, the lack, the, 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 the calls have, really, I'm not gonna say see, but they went down tremendously. Because those two, three ambulances have helped cover the burden of EMS protection in the county. So you, the county has been able to survive with those two units that they provide, because there's two, three units that's involved, that's picking up the slack. Um, I'm here today, I, I, I don't, I didn't, Mr. Grant, to talk with you, so, uh, I'm here now with a sense of urgency to this board, because, uh, February, I believe, West Tennessee Healthcare came to us and wanted to basically renegotiate their contract. Where we would have to pay some type of stipend or supplement for them to provide and continue to provide those ambulances in the county, I mean, I'm sorry, in the city. And they made that, they, they made that a fact that June thirtieth of this year. So in July one, those ambulances in the city involved, unless we take action, go away. And wherever we had two, three units on top of two to three units in the county, we go down to two units in the county. Um, I have, and I don't like to say, I'm here with a sense of urgency, and I know some of y'all may say, well, this is my first hearing about it, I haven't heard this, I, I can't speak for why you have. I, as a council, we done everything we can to put this out, what's going on. I spoke to the commissioner, me and Mayor Postle, been discussing since, I guess, when he got elected, we've been talking about the problem. Um, not to, I'm not trying to scare anybody, uh, but I have been consumed with EMS stuff for the past probably two months. And what do we do? How do we figure this out? EMS is a essential service based off the state law that the county is to provide, not the city, not the city, the follower, not anyone else, the person, the burden follower on the county. Um, so I'm here asking you, what's y'all's plan, and how do we take up, where are we going from here? We got, in my opinion, three options. Option one, do nothing, um, and we stuff the way that the city. Option one, do nothing, um, and we stop the making of a decision on what to say on what we're gonna do to be lacking in EMS cover. Option two, the county continues to keep, uh, EMS and add extra revenues to it. Option three, and my opinion is the best option hands down is to give it to West Tennessee Healthcare. I have nothing against our current county EMS. They are probably overworked and underpaid by far, but they just, the, the way it is, currently, as it is, there is not enough. The services are not there to compete and provide to the citizens of part of the county what West Tennessee Healthcare can do. It's, it's just not, not there. Uh, they, they made a proposal. I don't know if y'all have it. I don't know what y'all have it or don't have. They made a proposal to take over, uh, the county EMS. They asked for some, some, I think it was eight hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. And I've heard from different commissioners, different people, we just can't afford it. Well, I'm just telling you now, when your phone start ringing because people are calling nine one one and there's not a unit available, I want you to know how to respond if we can't afford it, you know, your responsibility.
Got a question. So, so you say that, that the city of Baller is not wanting to pay the additional fee? Is that what you're saying?
That's why this is an emergency? Why is it an emergency?
Yeah, I, I don't understand. You said that if everything was fine, y'all left and West Tennessee took care of you. They've done a really good job. Now they want to charge the Baller an additional fee?
Right.
And now it's all of a sudden, the county doesn't understand why?
Because the city of Baller is located in the heart of the county.
But y'all opted to get out.
We opted to get out.
When that happened, it reduced our, the revenues for our six, by sixty percent. Now you can get back in, is that what?
You can put it however you want to put it. Sure, I want to back in. I know I want to back in. I want the county to give it to, to West Tennessee Healthcare for what I want. You make that decision. That's up to this body. But your responsibility, whatever the city does, the, the EMS is the responsibility of the county. If we decide to do more on top of that as a city taxpayer and city municipality in this county, that's fine. That's what we choose to do. But the burden, the burden of EMS is a county burden. It's not a city burden. The reason it's an emergency for me is because I live in the city of Baller and I also live in the heart of the county. And like I said, I know what it is to have a police officer transporting people to a hospital because we don't have ambulances.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that, that, that you don't understand. And I'm just, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to understand why all of a sudden it's an emergency. I, I assume it's because the, the city doesn't want to pay West Tennessee to continue that service.
No, it's not responsible for the city to pay it. That's just my view.
You? So, I mean, can, I, to help you understand. Let me, let me just finish.
Okay.
It's a legitimate question. If, if, if it was okay for y'all to take the funds away from the county and give them to, 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 and I guess I'm confused as to why is it, uh, an emergency?
We.
Uh, because, I mean, we, the whole, the whole reason I think the county didn't want to move that direction is for the very reason that they're doing to y'all is that they can, at any time that they want to, say, you gotta pay more or we're out. And, and, and I'm not saying, I'm not trying to defend the fact that we might have, want to keep an ambulance service, but that's, I mean, that's a distinct issue. They're doing it to you right now. So, uh, and if you're wanting us to, to all be in the same glass at the jury room, that's kind of confusing to me. Why would we want to do something that y'all don't want to do?
Because it's not, that's not, let me answer the question. Because it's not our responsibility.
Well, yeah, I understand. I'm not, no, I'm not suggesting that y'all should pay. I'm just saying that, that you find yourself in a position that the county may very likely find themselves in, in the county.
When, are you finished, the lock and ask? So here's where we at. What you, what we're admitting, asking the city of Baller to pay for EMS service is the equivalent of telling cases will to go and pay interstate forty. It's not his responsibility to do that. Now, if, if cases.
We're not asking you to pay.
But.
You're, you're yelling at us and we have not asked you to pay one cent on EMS.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not.
Well, I feel like I can get you.
Well, I'm speaking.
Let's keep on these, okay.
Well, thanks, I'm LA.
All right, let's, let's, uh, let's have your floor, please.
I'm not smiling.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, uh, Commissioner Dale, were you through the server on your, on your questions? Were you through the server? I would. I will, I'll show. No, we, we didn't take any revenues from the county. We did not take any. So where's I'm seeking? Can I, let me ask you a question. So I'm, I'm explaining to you how this works. When you have a call, the insurance, the call, when you're transported with EMS, that money that your insurance cover, self-pay high where they goes, that goes to whoever transports you. It's, that's, well, right now, the county has EMS service, that revenue is coming to the county. And when we went and took over, what we took over the city of Baller, those, those transports from EMS, that revenue went to West Tennessee Healthcare. I, I stood in this very spot two years ago because what we're talking about now, I said the same thing. That before the city of Baller takes an action, I want you guys to understand what we're doing. That's exactly what I said. And Commissioner Lee Barry, this point was, if we have to beef up county EMS, we'll beef up county EMS. What, what is the value of a lot? I agree with him. We're at that point now. Commissioner, the, the commissioner didn't take any action. They, nothing happened. So I'm standing here today and I'm explaining to you, if we, if, when we talked about the proposal with West Tennessee Healthcare, if that was ever a cost, we probably would have took it out if that was ever a cost. But if I'm standing at, if I'm, if I'm standing at city hall and I got somebody that's telling me, we're gonna bring two ambulances to Baller to help cover the, cover the, uh, help cover the need for EMS in your city. And I'm not gonna charge you a dime. It's crazy for us not to do it. So I'm standing here now because they're at a point now where they're gonna have to make up a difference and somebody needs to do it. I, my suggestion is West Tennessee Healthcare, if you choose not to do that, that's fine, but I'm trying to get the urgency and I'm trying to get you and the rest of the commissioners to stand. On July one, you go out to two units in this entire county. And if y'all are comfortable with that, then that's okay. I'm not, I, it's not enough for having two units in all the part of the county, twenty-some thousand people in it. It's, it's by the decision to do what you want to do with it. And I don't need to come out, be disrespectful or yell or anything like that. I'm, I'm concerned. I don't know what anybody else is, but I'm very concerned about it. So I'm trying to get you, because when I started with Commissioner Grant about it, he didn't have a clue about it. So, you know, that's why I asked.
And that's why I asked for this discussion to inform everyone. It's, it's not like we're making a decision right now. Yeah, it's just information getting out of here to all of us so we can make that informed decision. Uh, Chairman Walz, has, uh, West Tennessee, you knew it, they hear eight hundred thousand?
No, sir. It was, um, it was a preliminary offer. It was eight hundred and sixty-seven, the first offer. And it was then, it was eight hundred and sixty. I have talked to him, um, at different times. We've had different meetings and we've talked to him. And they would actually take the revenue, of course, to insurance, and then we would then pay them that eight hundred and sixty. And I understand the, I understand the point, but the law changed, I guess, a couple of years ago, I think it was, when it did. It said that any municipality within the county could have its own ambulance service. And when Mayor Matizik paid before this body, he wasn't asking permission. Previously, he was letting everybody know, um, because I was sitting right out there and he didn't.
I mean, just letting everybody know, you know, that's what was happening and that's what was going on.
So if that service ceased to exist, and this is my point, as, as Commissioner Lee Barry had said at that time, we will have to, uh, take on, of course, the, the runs. Uh, it would be more, of course, in revenue for the billing, but we would have to be for our service. We have to hire more personnel, of course, and to get them running efficiently. I mean, and that's, that's, uh, that's a task that the county will have to do. Of course, we want emergency services is, it's imperative. We have to take care of our people, whatever we have to do. So, um, but it's up to this commission to decide that, whatever the commission is to sign up. Commissioner Mayor, I'm sorry.
Mayor Matizik, I'll see if you can answer this question at the end, but to, to bring some of the newly elected commissioners up to speak to you. Question, how did we get here? COVID. We're in the aftermath of COVID. Why did the EMS end up in Baller? COVID. The emergency call volume was so high that Hardman County EMS could not handle. We weren't even doing some transfers. Am I, am I telling the truth, James? It was our, our emergency call volume was, was off the charts. It didn't matter if it was routine, it was COVID, people were scared. You can't fault Baller for when, when an outside contracted ambulance says, we're gonna put two ambulances in your city free of charge. I mean, that's pretty much a no-brainer. But that's how we got here. Did it hurt our revenue? Yes, it did because as COVID diminished, the call volume diminished. Uh, the budget in the past, the budget presented tonight, it's budgeted for three trucks, um, around the clock. If we were fully staffed, we could go to three and two. We've discussed that in ambulance committee, uh, meetings. Uh, the problem with the quote, Mayor, you and I spoke a, a time or two. We've only ever ran three trucks max, uh, more noon or daytime or nighttime. You know, it's, to my understanding, that the preliminary bid or quote they gave us is for four. Well, we've never had four. I, I don't understand why they wouldn't bid it at three because, and you and I have spoke to this, you know, say they do pull out of Baller, I don't blame you for, for not wanting to pay. Are they gonna park a bus at, at their hospital, which is Baller General, to catch those transfer? Are they even gonna go through nine one one? Are we even gonna have an opportunity for them? I think that's a very legitimate question if we're gonna, if, if we decide to keep our EMS. Because there's nothing we can do to stop them from still picking up that transfer revenue from their own hospital. But they, to my knowledge, so far, they will not even pull three trucks.
Yeah, I, uh, I can't speak officially with West Tennessee Healthcare, but the reason they pulled it forward is because they see the call volume that they have in Baller. And what James just mentioned earlier, they're, they're running two hundred calls in, in Hardman County too. They're running about two to three hundred calls in Baller too. So they don't feel that three is adequate enough for it. So that's why the four was there. But you brought up the revenue. The budget, uh, the budget that y'all voted on for EMS revenue is a million four, if, if I'm not mistaken. The county had, so there's y'all lowered so much of the revenue amount.
One point one.
Okay, one point one. And so the last time we did it in four, it was twenty twenty. And right now, we'd be lucky if we get a bid this year. And he, and, and that's why I said, what I got, maybe a little over nine hundred thousand. So we're, this body is already budgeting to lose more than five thousand. That's in a perfect world. That's, that's what y'all are budgeting for now in a perfect world. So it's.
Eight hundred thousand.
And so, and if you had, that's, that's, that's all I'm saying. So the numbers, I'm hearing that West Tennessee is so expensive, we can't afford, the numbers ain't that far off. Uh, so, you know, that, that's, but that's, to answer to your question, that's, that's why it was like, like, if they don't feel that three is adequate for them. But, and the call volume have went down, from, I mean, it's gone down a couple, I mean, we, we're sending a lot more. You have to think about stuff. Besides nine one one calls, you automatically have my car rates and stuff like that. But when you think about transfer, dialysis, uh, cancer patients, if you sit at the hospital, it may not be an emergency run. But you sit at the hospital for eight hours waiting for an ambulance, that's, that, nobody, I don't want to sit at the hospital for eight hours helping, unless, unless a bed waiting for ambulance. So that's, that's, you know, that's, that's, that's the answer to that question. They don't feel the full three is adequate.
But do you have a answer to that or James, or can you, just say a transfer from Baller General? Is there anything to keep Med Center from, from taking that from us and then they move down?
Uh, from the way I understand it, they can, they can, they can set their hospital.
Right.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. Uh, Commissioner Lear?
Sorry.
Uh, since West Tennessee Healthcare has taken over service from Baller, what has it done to our revenue bottom line?
Presenting our current, in the last year, it has declined.
One point four at the end of twenty-one, like you said.
But that was budgeted twenty-one, twenty-two, I believe. That's how we arrived at one point one. The last full budget year that has concluded, the revenue was one being one fifty-six, I believe, Mr. Grant. And it, it was budgeted for one point four in twenty-two, twenty-three, which were about through with. And currently, we were in our last, uh, meeting with the May revenues in, I believe we were at eight sixty.
And right now, you're at nine. And before, pardon, before West Tennessee Healthcare came in, your revenue in twenty-one was one million four hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Well, some other topics of discussion and questions I had also in this discussion was, did, um, did West Tennessee, did they show any interest in our EMS building out there?
Yes, the, whether the proposal is, they were lease the building, I think it was a dollar a month, I mean, I'm sorry, dollar a year. Um, and they just would, uh, lease the ambulance, something like a dollar a year or something like that. Because that cost, that cost is for, I mean, if they, if you're charging a hundred thousand for rent, all it's gonna do is put it in the, in the, the expense line. So if you look at West Tennessee Healthcare's proposal, it's not far off from James's expense line. The only difference is mainly salaries and benefits and field, and maybe some field. They're gonna run double the people we run. So his expense line, West Tennessee Healthcare said, expense, they're not that different in expenses and revenue. It's just, they, they got more resources, all it is. So like that, and, and like I said, this body decides we're gonna, if, bottom line, this body is gonna have, puts more revenue in, 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 uh, EMS. I'm, there's no way around it. I mean, bottom line, this, this body has to come up with a way of taking out the front dollar. That's your decision to do. There, there is not enough money currently that's been spent on EMS as it stands today. And I'm sorry, go ahead.
What's the term of this contract length that they offered you?
Length that offered me with West Tennessee.
Years, how long is the contract for?
I think, uh, we did it a year or time, I think it would, would.
All right. If we, if we elect to go with EMS, we sign a contract for them. And Claire Burns, what they gonna come back and challenge in same pathway of the other family?
They, you, well, two things, my two, that first thing is, you bid it out if you choose to do that. They're, they're not the only EMS provider. But my second thing is, and this is just my opinion, I don't believe in, uh, obscuring one, but West Tennessee Healthcare, that's how a hospital is in this county since ninety-five. And I guarantee you, they've lost tons of money, thousands, if not millions of dollars on that hospital. They made a commitment to us that they were gonna make sure the hospital stayed here. They didn't come and ask this county, nor did they ask the city for a dime when they wouldn't make an end fee. They figured it out. So for us, I mean, in my opinion, it's a slap in the face to them to not even all of those negotiating. Uh, I mean, we looking at West Tennessee Healthcare as an outside almost, but they're part of this community. I know they're big guys, but, I mean, they trusted us, we need to trust them. Like, I, it's, I, I mean, they're, they're losing money on this thing and there's no profit in this. They're losing money in here, but they have a stake in this community with Baller as our hospital. They seem to care more about citizens there and what we showing them the respect to, to work with them. So like, I, if it, if it, what it costs is what it costs. And they made commitments to hire, oh, hire the people that we get, um, and I, so I can tell you, there's no, he cannot, the current budget he got, he cannot compete with not just West Tennessee Healthcare, but any other, by any other institution around us hiring EMT and paramedics. I mean, I, is that not, your salaries, how do they align with everybody else?
Uh, well, certainly a lot of firms will be within everybody else's.
But West Tennessee Healthcare too, so we start with right, nineteen dollars?
We're right at, yeah.
So we start with nineteen, paramedics would be at twenty-six or twenty-seven, I think?
Within, within a few dollars.
No, but, so like, we, I, still, if you do that, you're still only gonna cover two. You're only gonna have two units. And the overtime budget is still in there too. There, I mean, we, he's not, they, the county is not good for the staff to be in this, but I don't know, I don't know. But we can't, we don't have anybody for them.
Mayor, you know, they didn't charge the city any, like, this past year, right?
No, sir.
Do you mind telling us what they wanted to renew at?
I, I haven't made it to that part of the, we haven't had that discussion. I asked them to figure out what we, what's gonna happen to the county. So I, I.
So they haven't made it to any?
I haven't asked for a number and frankly, I, I, I mean, I don't think that we need to pay them to pay the money. But I, I tell you, we, I know I got council people here that's ready to make the hard decision and pay if we have to. Uh, don't want to, don't think it's our responsibility. I, I, I'm telling y'all first here that I, I'm gonna have a whole lot to say, not just from Mayor Baller, but of the citizens of Hardman County. That the city of Baller is having to pick up the slack to pay for the costs of EMS. As well as, you know, West Tennessee Healthcare just stays with the county. It doesn't matter. The check you have to be worth to somebody.
And I guess that's one of the things that perplexes me, uh, Mayor. If, if they've been providing the city of Baller with two free of charge, and I haven't been a part of any negotiations, I can't understand why they would do us a proposal for three, whether they ran four or not. They provide two for free. And, and we are budgeted for three if we were fully staffed, uh, come July one.
Well, the reason they, 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 there was a lot of unknowns coming into the agreement. There was a whole lot of unknowns of, would it work? How much, how much would they get in call volume? They was expecting to lose, but I. They was expecting to lose, but I'll tell you something, it's costing, that's different. When you got two EMS providers, when you have a nine-one-one call in Milton, and that nine-one-one call is taken to Bolivar, and then they transport, that model is the way they're getting paid, not saying as if they were to pick you up in Milton and transport you. So that, that makes a difference or whatever. So they, they came in knowing that they would lose, but they didn't come in thinking that they would lose as much as they're losing. And they're gonna provide the service, no matter what the cost is, but they got all the profits and revenues that they can pull from. I'm like, oh, we're sitting on what they can. So that's why we're in this situation. And I, it's sort of offensive to me to look at, they didn't come in, it's not like they're coming in and was trying to say, we're gonna be here for a year, and then we're gonna come back next year and double the price on you, or we're gonna come back and you're out there to trip with, oh, look, you won't get you. It's, it's, that's not, that's not how they operate. That's not how they operate with us, and that's, you know, but the cost of everything is going up. It's just bottom line, the cost of stuff is going up, and like we talked about, it's a cost. And somebody needs to be willing to pay the cost.
Mayor, I'd like to say something. I agree with Mayor Matizzi, um, and I have agreed that either we need to up the revenue, up, up what we pay and up the budget, or we need to do something else. I mean, either way, we're gonna have to pay. It doesn't matter how you look at it, either we're gonna pay our EMS, we're gonna fully fund it and, and give it more funding, like he said, or we're gonna pay, uh, West Tennessee? I would like to ask Commissioner Grant, though, you said a new hospital, new health center that includes EMS. So you said that, what, what do you mean by that?
I said it's just a possibility and talk of the life, so.
So a new EMS is coming to, in addition to what we have, another EMS service could be coming to our?
West Tennessee, West Tennessee is talking about building a new building, and that's what's my question. Have they have an interest? If we were to go with West Tennessee, would they have an interest in our building? Since they're gonna build one anyway, possibly.
So, so a new hospital, we're, discussion, that's what we're hearing, a new hospital and a new EMS. That's what you're saying?
So that's, that's just.
The top. But well, you said new EMS, you mean, uh, new hospital, the EMS building, um, not necessarily new EMS provider.
Okay, I'm, I'm another side, same side.
So basically, it sounds like eleven days, you gotta, you gotta make a decision to pay even or not pay hospital eleven days. So if you're coming to us tonight, whether or not you want us to vote on this tonight, it sounds like me wants to, or you're urging us to, don't even back up. But I, I, I like some of your ideas, I'm not, I'm not totally against them either way. But we gotta have some time to think about it, for sure. You can respect that.
Right.
This is a constant thing, we, we get this stuff shoved in our face all the time, how are you gonna make a vote? We're not making a vote on this tonight. And I don't, maybe that's not the, the plan, but it's definitely not my plan, we're not voting on it. I don't want you gonna do them eleven days, because we're not gonna meet again through Ju-, uh, August, or excuse me, July, whatever it is.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm not necessarily asking y'all to vote to take any, go with West Tennessee Healthcare, go with it. I'm, I'm here because I, I, I was came in January, I met with, um, Gray Botters January fourth. I met with Jamie and Bethany, I think it was in March. I've been with both of them, so I'm, I'm sorry I wasn't out here eleven days, but I mean, here's where we at. Just, that's where, I'm sorry, I can't tell you, I, I mean, I don't have an option on how that happened.
That's, well, I did want to hear a plan of action from West Tennessee, or Med Center, whoever, won't them in here telling us the do's and don'ts?
They've been waiting to be here for two years, if not longer than that. They've been waiting to come and make the presentation and the whole.
But ju- just, I mean, you, you just made the comment that they're not, that West Tennessee is not the type to come in, make a deal, and then go up to next year. But that's exactly why you're standing in front of us today.
Yeah, I'm, I'm saying they're not the type that's gonna come in and try to take advantage. Because the way it's being portrayed is that West Tennessee Healthcare is coming here free and it's looking like, oh, look, got you now, we don't charge you now. No, West Tennessee Healthcare, I, I don't know what they're saying, I haven't asked them what they're gonna charge me. I haven't, we haven't looked that far in the discussion, because I asked courtesy from them to see what this board was gonna do once we presented it to this board. But West Tennessee Healthcare is not coming, they expected to have a loss, but they didn't expect it to be as much as it is. Now, how much they're gonna charge us for the two units that we have now, I can't tell you what that number is. But they expected, they expected to lose. But like I said, the process, but they, they're not coming and just saying, oh, like, look, we, you know, like, as if though they're coming behind the, behind the, out back, and you know, we got you on choke up now.
But, but again, the reason y'all are here is that they went up after, after, basically getting y'all to, to lead the county system. And, and I think it was Harden County, and I think I talked to you about it a couple of months ago, at, 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 uh, at, at, at that meeting, where I believe they built a new building, and, and then West Tennessee went up to like four hundred thousand dollars for that county.
Chester County.
Uh, was that the county?
Chester.
Chester County. So I mean, it's not, that's not like, like Mr. DeBerry said, it's not like a crazy thought, that he, he come in here, shut our ambulance service app down, and then all of a sudden, we, we may be regretted. So I mean, it's not an easy decision.
Not, not an easy decision at all, but like I said, they, they guaranteed that for COVID and every other hospital in West Tennessee and across the state of Tennessee closed, they stayed here and they, they lost a ton of money. And they made a commitment to Harden County that West, that our hospital would close. If they were about profiting, about making a whole lot of money, I guarantee you, the doors of all the other hospitals would be locked right now. So, I mean, the cost of, I can't speak to what they've done, counties, I can't speak to that, I don't, I, I don't know. All I know is that we are here in Harden County. So, you know, I, what I would like to know from this board is some kind of action that something is gonna happen, because we've been kicking the can down the road about for a long time. And when I came up there two years ago, I told you that this was, this might be a possibility. And there was nothing, nothing, so here we go.
I think we need to send a family support, and let Jamie discuss, come up with a plan and bring it back to us. I mean, we're not closing, I'm gonna wait up. But I mean, it needs to be something drawn up.
Commissioner, you said, you said we need to do a record today, post a recordation from our, our MS committee.
And, and am I looking wrong, and, and Jamie, I mean, if you don't have an ambulance service in twelve days, and somebody needs help, I mean, y'all are gonna, yeah, and so it's not like y'all are gonna be without. We'll have to figure out something to get more bodies and get in place, if that's, if that's the way we move.
Like I said, you know, just, just, just think about this, we do the math. If we got three, we got two, three units in Bolivar in Maine and ran two hundred calls, and then, and like, it's like, like you said, they ran about two hundred calls. Comes July one, you got four hundred calls with the same tube that he had to run that, get ready for your phone line. And I hope it's not the, what we don't wanna hear, that somebody died because an ambulance won't run it. And that's what's been bothering me, and that's the sense of urgency that I'm really concerned about, that we are about to double the call volume, and we're already, you know what the overtime budget looks like with the county right now, we're already at that point, so.
Mr. Mayor. There, there's a reason why we can only run two ambulances right now. And that's because Bolivar pulled out. I mean, that's, that's honest to God's truth. Bolivar covered Bolivar, and we were left with what was left in the county. And that's why we're down to, to the units. Because, because of that, that call volume, that, that revenue was a terrible.
Commissioner, uh, Colonel Lyle, respectfully disagree with you, you were at two ambulances when the camp, when the Bolivar was with you.
No. That's not true.
Okay, you were at three.
We had three. We lost third of our call volume, we lost third of our.
Okay, so now you have, all right, you still, you're still not staffed to cover what we have in the county. That, because you, if you were, you could explain a three hundred dollar overtime line. So the, the, you, to make it tomorrow, how do you wanna put it? But please don't put this on us and make this city of Bolivar's fault for, for providing coverage like one of the commissioners over there said, like Commissioner Goer, I mean, I'm sorry, Commissioner Goer said, don't blame us of coming in and doing something that's gonna help and provide coverage to our community.
Don't blame me for the decisions that y'all made for Bolivar. You had, you had no, no regard for Harden County when you made the decision. And as the mayor, as the leader, you took care of yours. I respect that, okay? But I wasn't here.
And, and hey, I stood there and said what I told them.
Man, I'm feeling guilty for decisions that y'all made, I didn't, I, we didn't vote on you going there.
That, you made a decision based off what this board made. I'm sorry you're stuck in that seat and making that decision now. But I stood here and I said, this is what we're about to do. And West Tennessee Healthcare wanted to come and present to the county. We, 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 we stood here and we talked about this. I'm sorry we in this situation now, but you, I, I'm not gonna take the blame for it, and I'm not gonna take the blame for what's about to happen, but we don't have coverage. Because the city of Bolivar did what we did, and we can, and it helped the county. It helped the county, because there is no way, because the county has been short, and every, I mean, every workforce is a problem in every entity. What we did helped the county. And at this point, we're no longer, we're not gonna take the city tax money and pay for county services. It's just not right. We did this with the A E M S, we did this with the landfill, we've done this with multiple range, where the city of Bolivar has took on extra expense on behalf of covering the, problems with the county. I, I, we're not gonna do that.
You can say that, Bolivar City County does, so Bolivar's a part of it.
Bolivar's a part of it, but it's not ours, it's built to pay for county services.
We're, and that's what you did, you helped us, and we appreciate that. For whatever time you did that, we appreciate that. And we will make a decision when the time comes at a later date. We cannot do it right now. Thank you, sir.
That's fine, tell me what y'all want to do, and tell the citizens of Harden County what you're gonna do, and we'll go from there, but.
We will.
Well, I mean, I, because we can take some kind of action, I'm sorry, y'all wanna go to.
He made that.
But, but I'm, I'm saying, if you're gonna take it to the E M S to me, so, put that in the form of a motion or something, and we can have that, that you're gonna go to the E M S to me, when are they gonna report back?
The next week.
Okay, let's make sure that happens.
Well, he said. Nobody has met with him, nobody has met with him, Rob, any kind of.
West Tennessee has.
I was not with, with the committee?
No.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Well, I just wanna make sure that that action happens, that's all I'm saying.
Yes, I do.
I forgot my word.
Yeah.
But can I have all those sixteen? That, what, what, what does it hurt to put that in the form of a motion that if I'm going to the E M S to me, and from that committee, you have a report that's one? Can West Tennessee healthcare? Thank you.
Stop moving, stop moving.
But I mean, you can't blame me for asking the commissioners to do something in the form of, like, just next to me do it, don't.
Got a motion, second on the floor, Mr. Chair.
Actually, uh, if the commission approves that, uh, it will be done, but it is actually a motion out of order. But if, if this commission approves it, I will ask for the, um, commission for approval. And the reason is because in Robert's rules, it was not, it was not on the agenda for the vote. And it can be if they override it, so we have a first and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion?
I, I do, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I just brought this tonight because I was done with the search that completely, without plus throwing on the ambulance, uh, problems that were happening here in Harden County. You know, I have a lot of questions, like, boy, would it take for Harden County to come up to call our West Tennessee, how much money are we talking? And I'm not looking to get rid of the public county ambulance service at all. I just have a lot of questions that are out there, a lot of people in the community are asking me about the situation too. Uh, I think Commissioner Victor's even mentioned, do we have, uh, service in middle strata? Do we have ambulance in middle strata? Um, you know, I don't know these things. I'm not on the E S, EMS committee, and I just have a lot of questions, and I had no idea, I'm just not getting into this. I have a discussion.
Commissioner Miller is the chair of our AMAS, um, AMAS.
I spoke, I, I chaired all this with Commissioner Miller, um, in March. Me and Commissioner Miller and Mr. Potters sat in my office and.
Not back.
I'm sorry, change, then, Commissioner Miller and Jamie sat in my office in March, I spoke with Commissioner Potters in January. So I mean, I felt my part trying to.
Mr. Mayor, was the fact that they were gonna start charging y'all, was that part of that meeting, this discussion?
Yeah, we, we, we explained that, I explained that to all of them. I mean, cause me and, and me and, I, um, we spent, me and him were talking about, you know, the revenue, and he explains to me what possible happens if that revenue is paying back. We talked about all that, um, that, I mean, so.
Well, Mayor, I did, I, I got a couple of questions for you. Uh, if part of the county was the EMS commission, it was to make, uh, have a thorough discussion on this, and come to you, uh, come to the commission here. It's like, we're gonna provide you a lot of service than West Tennessee Healthcare, we're, we're gonna do this, we're gonna do this for the city. Would you come back on board with, uh, again?
The council approved it, I can't speak for the. I mean, I, I wanna know this, that's why I'm standing here now. I wanna know what we don't do.
Of course, you want to know.
We got, we ain't got a lot of time, I mean, it's just, sorry I'm gonna be arguing, we ain't got a lot of time to do, we ain't got six months to go back and forth about it.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Question, can we rescind that motion in being outlawed? I think by word, we're, we're gonna meet this committee, they already did that.
It's actually against Robert's rules, but Commissioner Miller, if, I'm gonna see if you're gonna have a call meeting with the AMAS.
Is that what you said, not?
Is there any other, any other discussion? And I understand, I, I very, it's, it's a dilemma for, for everybody involved. And I think that what hurts everyone, everybody has to work together.
Well, the dilemma is we come up here a week before, for a year.
Yeah.
That's the dilemma.
Yeah.
I mean, it's like he's trumping that up, we gotta make a decision. Don't come to me like, oh, we should, um, have all this all worked out.
I'm, I'm, I'm just, this is, this is my meeting, I, I came with all the bags, I presented all this stuff to, to ambulance.
I see you come in, we gotta make a decision tonight.
I, I'm sorry, I was asked here, Mr. Miller, I wouldn't have asked six months ago, I wouldn't have asked if I'm six months ago. Only reason I'm here is because I was asked to come. I presented all this stuff, Commissioner Miller, I convinced Senate, uh, Mr. Potters, they don't need this, they ain't known about this since the first of the year. Why y'all never had a meeting, why didn't you ask the other bit before then? I can't speak to that, so I'm sorry. I, so, I'm sorry, I'm just not here, I was just asked to come here, that's why I'm here. I didn't come here to force y'all to make a decision. I came here because I was asked, like, Commissioner Grant, if you could come, that's why I'm here, only reason.
Mr. Mayor, had he not asked you to come, you wouldn't be here tonight.
Uh, if I didn't ask to do it on the, no, no, how, I mean, I.
Okay, so my, my question is, if we would have never known that Bolivar's in this predicament.
And that's, that, that's, I'm not the mayor of, of Harden County, I'm, I'm sorry.
And I want to make it clear that I was unaware that Bolivar was in this predicament. There was no discussion about that, when we were, uh, planning to.
We, we've been in this such session, like I said, with them, I, I talked to Mayor Paul, I talked to Jamie. I'm sorry that we hadn't, y'all didn't wish for none of that, but it ain't my responsibility to know about y'all about stuff that's happening in the county. That's not, Brad asked me about it, that's how I came up. I'm, that's, I'm here because I was asked to be here. So if Jamie didn't tell you, or Commissioner Miller didn't tell you, or Mayor Paul, or whoever that I was expressing to, I'm sorry. But like, that's, I, I'm, that's not my responsibility.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
I would just say, before we leave that topic, Mayor and, uh, and Mr. Miller, if we're gonna look at all facets, we need to have West Tennessee there to ask questions, we need Jamie there to ask questions. And, and I, I don't disagree with Mayor, because this, this has been going on, of course, there was an election, uh, through this. That proposal's been looked at before, but the commission at the time showed interest in keeping our EMS, so it died. The problem with it didn't, that's how, and here we are. Uh, Mayor Paulson and I have talked about it, we've been working on our budget. If we're, if we're gonna keep our EMS, we gotta have a director, a full-time director. In defense of Jamie, I told him at a budget meeting out there, there's no way we can expect him to run inefficient EMS as acting director while he is riding a bus in the full-time pyramid, it's too much for any one person. So we, we need to look at all of the facets in this meeting, and, and it sounds like quickly.
And, and may I say something? Before we leave this topic, uh, I have to, um, say in respect to Mayor Matizzi, he did, he stood right here two years ago, and he brought this, uh, issue to our attention. So it's that, that it is nothing new, because he gave us all points on where we would be at, and that's where we at today. And I totally respect him and, uh, also my commissioner for bringing to the board, because it's not a new topic.
I think it's just a new topic to new commissioner to have been in this discussion for a while, I'm just.
Well, yes, yeah.
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 All right, let's, uh, let's move on to Fuquid, thank you, Mayor. And there, there are hard decisions, and we said that today morning, and we're gonna have to make it sometime. Uh, we do need to, uh, does everybody have their conference on the budget? All right, we have. All right, we have... Commissioner, Commissioner Miller, I'll turn your budget to me.
Before we get to the rest of the resolutions, uh, we'll address the second reading of the budgets. Uh, as you heard from Kathy, the highway department budget has not changed since the first reading, what you were presenting in May. Uh, the schools budget has not changed other than a, a few thousand in, in revenue with the, the tax offset. Is that right, Chris? Uh, but in the, uh, county general, you got your booklets. There, there are some changes. If, if you've had a chance to look at this, since we received it last Thursday, the changes were highlighted in yellow, whether they were on the revenue side, uh, or the expenditure side. And to summarize, uh, this budget, if you will look on page thirty, your, your revenue totals will be on page eight. Your expenditure totals will be on page twenty-nine. And on page thirty is your summary, column six, budget committee. The top number, three hundred and twenty-one thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars. That is the surplus presented with this budget. Uh, and going back to the, the equipment for Miss Amber, I requested this number be higher than, than two eighty-seven, eight ninety-six, I believe it was, because we are, are paying for that voting equipment out of fund balance in this fiscal year and we're being reimbursed after June thirty, next fiscal year, which is just a wash, but it's happened in two subsequent years.
What page, what page are you talking about, down, down?
Sir?
What page thirty? What page?
Uh, thirty for the summary. In column six, Commissioner Bailey, when you get there. But two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, eight ninety-six of that three twenty-one is strictly reimbursement of voting equipment. So, in, in my eyes, our surplus is roughly thirty-three thousand, thirty-four thousand.
Take the voting equipment out there?
Yes.
Yeah, yes.
But if you've had a chance, um, to see the changes, revenue or expenditure side, we'll, we'll take any questions, uh, on the budget. Yes, sir.
I have a couple of questions. One is, uh, on the election, I'm not certain where to put the budget funds for the facility that, that we are needing to try to deal with. Is that, is that in this budget?
Uh, no, not for a facility.
Okay.
There's a little bit of, of land purchase money in there. There's, uh, maintenance to build is, is in there.
And that was my, that was my other question since, uh, we had a lot of buildings and a lot of maintenance. I, I, I've seen a few line items for maintenance. Is there one on the line item or is that...
It, it depends, uh, like Mayor Paul said, addressed it yet, he, um, but he probably will. He only received one bid, also work to like C J C, but we can, we can work on that building out of a restricted fund.
All right.
Where our election commission, we probably cannot...
Right. I thought we had some water issues with this building that we need to deal with? And with that, uh, uh, courthouse building, you know?
Yes, yes. This, this is a separate mention. It is in the C J C and actually, uh, uh, trustee and the tax office as well. They're considered, uh, for the courthouse and the amnest and, uh, C J C. There's maintenance line items in, in restricted funds and it's what we'll be using, uh, to take that. And actually, a year later, we'll have, uh, we'll see that from, from S N Lawrence, we'll put that out there. But there's money in those line items already, uh, for the maintenance for that.
But, but also, Commissioner Bailey, in, uh, section fifty-one, eight hundred county buildings?
What, what page is that?
Uh, page twelve. There's, there's three line items of maintenance and repair service. Uh, one's vested at forty, one's vested at twenty, one's vested at two.
Okay. I found another line, another line somewhere that had, had some monies in maintenance. On page thirteen, I don't know if it's in the maintenance and repair or, but, um, it's in other facilities. It's about four thousand or thirty-five hundred dollars. Is that, would that be a maintenance, facility maintenance? Page thirteen, down fifty-one, eighteen?
Yes.
With county buildings, can you do that?
Are you speaking under, under other facilities?
Other facilities, there's, there's, it says, I, I, again, I'm not...
You have twenty-five hundred, a thousand. You, you know what that's for?
The twenty-five hundred?
Uh-huh.
I'm pretty quick with maintenance and maintenance.
Yeah, because there's tires.
Yeah.
Yeah. We should, we should, uh, any of those maintenance, uh, amounts, they'd be reverted for voting matching or grants. Those, they have, you know, strictly, the reason, what I'm really happy is I've got some, uh, paperwork that I'm gonna submit to the county next week about the archives building.
Yes.
And, uh, there's, so the Tennessee Historical Commission offers large grants for county and state-owned buildings that last within a historic district.
Yes.
That building qualifies. Uh, we, of course, we'll have to submit the forms, yes or no, from the Tennessee Historical Commission. But, you know, the, the grant amount can go up to four hundred thousand dollars. Also, I didn't know if it's a bunch of maintenance that was tagged for, uh, these buildings.
It's, it's a general, a general maintenance.
Okay.
But it, it's not the specific. Now, it can be, yeah, you can combine the line items and then use it for matching parts. So if you got a grant for a hundred thousand, that part is, is five, you're gonna come up with that five. But you'll have to pull it from that buildings, from that building's line.
Okay, well, those, those, uh, grants for the, uh, the day of those, when you're gonna start taking the application on those grants, will be July one. So I'll forward all the information to your office.
Right.
And, uh...
We have to do a letter of intent.
A letter of intent?
Yes.
I think, I think that's, that's, thank you, Mr. Bailey. Okay. I'll, I'll stand up and make sure you get all the questions.
Commissioner Bailey?
In, in looking for monies to, to, to deal with that building, there is, under the election commission, there's rentals. Is that, is that for the current building or is that, it is?
I would say...
It's like sixty-eight thousand dollars a year. I think that's about what they're... I couldn't hear what you said.
The lease item is in that position.
Okay.
Chairman, Chairman Paulson, I've got a simple question here that I quite understand, if you have to forgive me. Uh, but, uh, on the first page, it says that the issues, electric issues on the two floors would be classified to the same. Stephen Craig and Kim Pierce are just related by, uh, the, the, uh...
Exemptions are the kind of people that are under the year and the decision making role. Uh, there's different categories on that that you'll see provided by the state. Um, I hope Stephen should, you know, with the, with the, um, grant. And Mr. Pierce, I have added more and more responsibility and, and about to add grants as well, uh, for he has...
He's taking care of somebody now, what other responsibilities?
Somebody and grants and, and, uh, he is also helping, he's having to, still trying to help with the community centers with scheduling, uh, with getting those people... We have had this happen here recently and, uh, where there's people that supposed to show up there on time to, to open the community centers and something will happen and we, we weren't informed and didn't know it as soon as we found out. And, but it was, uh, you have, you have different ones, uh, floaters, you know, the channels. So he's, he's taking care of everybody's schedule.
Remember, the Tennessee Historical Commission, you're working with Mr. Pierce on grants and stuff?
Yes.
Okay.
And as well, too, for our health department, that's gonna be coming in, uh, to be working with the engineer, pardon me, working with the engineers as well.
Okay.
So with that, with that being said, the new fiscal year, uh, when the sheriff hires a new chief deputy, that your chief will be eligible for overtime? A chief deputy out of that?
Well, that may be a, that may be a question.
It's hard to ask. As if you're the only exempt person, since the sheriff's office is the sheriff. That's, that's on, that's at our discretion, is not. That's at the county's discretion.
No.
No, that's law. That's the federal law.
Whether they're exempt or not determined by the F L S A requirements they put in for being management decision maker to be able to pay against. Pardon me?
I have to hear right.
So under the law, the chief, chief deputy didn't make any decisions? As whether he would have sent the road chair since he could come to the back team? Whether he did or sent the road chair, if he would be in for a trip. Yeah, but, uh, he's, they're not against.
Mr. Chairman, one other question. Um, going back to, uh, what Commissioner Bailey was asking about the election commission, the, uh, money budget for the lease. Uh, I think in the letter that Mr. Baller said this commission, the last session, uh, may, he was intending to go up on the rent. Was that fact that he wanted to use the budget?
Let me ask you, was that coming, uh, my brother, I need you to get that. We may have to move on to that.
The budget I had showed was still the same lease price.
So which one?
It was, it didn't show on that budget, it's been increased.
Didn't, didn't that letter that he sent to his commission give the increase?
I have...
I don't have it, probably have all of that.
Okay.
What you claimed for last year, the maintenance made fifteen thousand?
See, it looks like as of June the fourteenth, it's been sixteen, seventeen, fourteen, across the increase for month of...
You want to seventeen something for June, what he said in the letter, two thousand is to...
Yeah, it's gonna be twenty-four. Yeah, for that fiscal year, for total fiscal year, it'll be twenty-four. Yeah.
So I just want to say, was amendment on with it?
Question, Amber, if we need to do an amendment, uh, your seven nineteen line out of office equipment, uh, obviously your vote with the country of the state. We've had twenty-five thousand in that line.
That's a grant too. That I've been waiting to see what's gonna happen with it. That's coming from Tennessee Homeland Security for new computer security system, to see what happens with the building. That money's just named by Tennessee Homeland Security. So that is the way it's gonna go.
Still have proceeding?
Because I'm waiting.
Is that still on revenue side?
I'm doing, I'm about to ask about the grants. It's not, I'm on the revenue side. I thought that was just a crazy thing. They carried two years on their funding. They house, just started building stuff, but Homeland Security, they do it. They did it for all nine and five counties.
Any other questions on the second reading?
Yeah, I got one, uh, question. On page twenty-three, back of the bill, improvements. Looks like, what, four hundred eighty thousand? What else, sir?
That is great.
That is great. That is great, it's just your time. Is that designated or specific? The Hill Farm.
Mr. Chairman, I found the amount. So the rate of seventeen fifty for May. Well, do we have a hold on it here? Oh, well, it's gonna be a maintenance extension. I would not put it in every year.
Uh, we can do it either way. We can be in the second reading, change that line out.
It's, it means because it's not in the, our county, so it needs a minimum. We still didn't sign, um, fills the year. All for May, yes, for the major, for, um, July.
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, anything on this year, if it's over, which it is already, uh, we'll see if they can clean up that line out. But we could change, that's fifty-one, five hundred, three fifty-one, page eleven. We can amend that to twenty-four thousand. He says it was two thousand.
Or two thousand.
That's a difference in eight thousand. Cause there he is with enough room and surplus on that. So that's gonna amend your time for, on page thirty-two, three, thirteen, two forty-two. That being said, Ms. Linda, are you looking for that grant at all, or you're gonna amend that, uh...
Which grant?
That Ms. Amber's speaking of.
Is that what?
If it's not on the left side...
It's not on the revenue.
Then you can put it on there.
When you can put it?
That, that a full, fully funded grant, is that it?
Yes, sir.
So what, what line out, you put that on?
You're gonna fill down, uh, a restricted grant, which is forty-six, nine, eight. Which returns that eight fifty, seven fifty-three.
And, and you do not think it's in there?
I know it's not in there.
Okay. Everybody's fault on page six of the revenue. Towards the bottom of the page, account number forty-six, nine, eight. Other state grants. Column six, that number gonna change to eight fifty, seven fifty-two. And now back to page thirty, column six. Go change that number to three thirty-eight, two forty-two. Move it down, back up.
Yeah, that's a hundred percent grant, you know?
Yeah, that's a hundred percent grant, you know, so that's a hundred percent on that on that equipment, you'll have time. And then, did you say it for two years?
Two years, it's been going on for almost two years.
Any other questions on that?
And I believe the only other grant in there in greater group, if there is one off the airport, it was one twenty. Is that is that a ninety-five five or a? Ninety-five five, that's what I'll be checking. That's the one you guys wrote. Any any other questions on the on the county general, second reading? There have been no other changes, uh, in the first reading of the drug fund or the landfill. Or the debt service. They were still as early as the first reading. Any other question?
I have to ask you, is all the department is satisfied with their budget?
I hope so. Now, we've had we've had with different departments, uh, there there is a move, as you know, with all the business going on. We're trying to, we get away from, uh, comp time, and which sheriff's department, Amber's department, or the the man too that worked there. Not knowing how many would work, that that's one of the things, we say the sheriff's department, there's eight hour holiday pay in there for every employee. Now, obviously, all of them are not gonna work that holiday, but it's in the budget. So hopefully, that'll put a stop to the accrued comp time, and we'll get paid as they go. We made the sheriff two or three times, we've got him fully staffed. Uh, there is some wiggle room, obviously, fee hours are too high, they're not eligible for insurance for three months, they're not eligible for retirement, for TCRS for six months. Those figures are in there as if they would start to draw at a meeting, so there is a little room there. I I will say moving forward to all, uh, elected officials, whether it's legal or not to change the rate of pay within your budget. With the increases we put, uh, in this budget and as tight as it is. Uh, especially sheriff's department spoke to sheriff for this, that we were coming in because they fall under maintenance effort. Just so everybody's on the same page, if any wage increase is wanting to be given, or there's a promotion in rank. Or a certification, uh, for an ambulance or a deputy, if they go from uncertified to certified. Please run it through the mayor's office with a budget amendment, because it is gonna change the line items of salaries, it's gonna change the social security line item, it's gonna change the Medicare line item. And it's gonna change the TCRS line item. That way, the chief executive's office can stay on top of everything payroll wise, budget wise, just so it can streamline through. And then none of us get to get in trouble.
I could answer your question quicker than that. Don't mess me up, I do nothing to see a lawsuit, no.
Read my mind.
I do want to thank the budget, they were wonderful this year.
Yes, yes, budget really, uh, a lot of hard work.
There was a lot of give and take to, yeah, the work and all that.
And with each, yeah, with each department too, thank the sheriff, and of course, Commissioner Hensley, Commissioner Sam, Commissioner Mayor, uh, we had Sharon Murphy. And then we had Richard Clark, and a lot of, a lot of Mitt Littler, yeah, Ms. Linda. She keeps it solid straight, is Mr. Christie fifty?
Any further question? Mayor, I make motion to, uh, accept all of the budget second reading, just read along with the highway department and school.
I'm saying.
Any discussion on the motion yet? Proper motion, second floor. Saying none, we will go into a roll call, vote by the clerk, please.
Bail?
Yes.
DeBarry?
Yes.
Gillum?
Yes.
Grantham?
Yes.
Hensley?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Kennamore?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Lanier?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Same?
Yes.
Vickers?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. And I believe we will go into the, uh, we had, real, uh, quickly, we had these resolutions. The tax rate, of course, we had a rephrase, and y'all do have that, it's, uh, they use six twenty, it's original one, the resolution for it. It's fixing the tax rate for running county, it breaks down the general, the general purpose school and the debt service law. But it breaks them down and it shows that a new tax rate. If if we have, um, an increase in the tax rate, it goes to a public hearing after that time, but if you accept the certified rate from the state. That that is being presented, you do not have that, which has to be passed, not as adopted. That's the way I understand it, is that is that correct on the, uh, on the legal ruling?
That's right.
If y'all want to see there, that that's what a new tax rate pretty for the county, one point three one zero two.
What was the old rate?
Two five five, two point five five, so the tax rate came down. All right, any questions? I would like to attend the motion to accept the tax rate, pardon county, is a dollar one point one two. Is there a motion?
Make the motion.
Second.
Motion's been made, the clerk will say, uh, clerk, you have that, Commissioner Mayor, Commissioner County. All right, any discussion? Saying none, we will have, that is the tax rate, we need the roll call, is that correct, uh, clerk, sir? Yes, ma'am.
Bail?
You would please.
Yes. DeBarry?
Yes.
Gillum?
Yes.
Grantham?
Yes.
Hensley?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Kennamore?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Lanier?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Vickers?
Yes.
Same?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Motion passes. Our next resolution, as you will see, is a nonprofit charitable resolution, it's gonna have this, um, that's on six twenty-two zero two. And he's had to pass it to the budget committee, of course. If you had a chance to look at those.
I think there's four that's been added, or you want to correct, check?
Let's see what we had from the from the original, uh, for our nonprofits, for commissioners, where you asked about nonprofits, we had Red Cross, um, Carleton's, Heart and Canyon Arts, Tanssils. Ramp, which is, uh, deals with domestic, and domestic assault, and then Veterans and Parents, and American Red Cross.
The veterans and fighters, what what was it?
That would be for the, yeah, the, yeah, for the veterans' form. All right, I see a motion to approve the resolution for appropriations to our nonprofits.
Mr. Chairman, is it said, I'm looking at that, well, I guess there's one's Red Cross, and one's American Red Cross, there's two listed on it?
Yeah, it's, oh, yeah.
American, yes.
Someone, yeah, American passion, I suppose, say American passion, okay.
American.
And, yes, that is, and then he's in the answer, for American passion.
I got a question, is this something that the county's done every, you know, every year, and this is the same, it's just like it's within the budget?
Yes, certainly, it is included in the budget, this is just a breakdown, got to get ever a resolution for the nonprofits. They may change from one county, yeah, one county mayor to another over a year, two year, it's it's up to the mission at the end, but.
But it's a it's a budget?
Three mayors, they just changed every time, so. But amount wise, amount wise, it either decreased or is that the same, correct?
And we have to put that only, and send it off to the state, when we send off our budget to the state, we have to put that in, you have three resolutions, and they have to be sent. All right, we need a ready motion.
Second.
Mr. Brown, Commissioner Mayor, second. Motion's been made, second, we bring the nonprofit charitable, resolution, any discussion on that? Saying none, the clerk, we have a roll call, please.
Bail?
Yes.
DeBarry?
Yes.
Gillum?
Yes.
Grantham?
Yes.
Hensley?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Kennamore?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Lanier?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Same?
Yes.
Vickers?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you very much. Our last resolution there, uh, will be for the appropriations for the funds. That is a breakdown of each, um, in the budget, as you will see from this. We have to send in a resolution that has each, uh, each capital, so that's what we do, we can always go over to our resolution. We also have our highway public works fund, our general purpose school fund, our debt service, and our education debt service as well, drug control fund.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I I move with the approved resolution number oh-six dash twenty dash oh oh three. With, uh, the amendment to fifty-one five hundred, election commission, changing that number to two seventy-three nine eighty-three, as presented in the second reading.
Second.
Motion's been made, second. Any discussion on the motion? Saying none, let's have a roll call, vote for our resolution.
Bail?
Yes.
DeBarry?
Yes.
Gillum?
Yes.
Grantham?
Yes.
Hensley?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Kennamore?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Lanier?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Same?
Yes.
Vickers?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Motion passes. The, uh, as we've talked about, um, a few months ago, there was a new law that came into effect. And we have to set aside time, and we we've talked about this, um, a couple of times here in Michigan, we have to set aside time for public comments. We do that anyway, but there is, uh, there is now law, so we have to set that time aside. And of course, there's a resolution, um, that came out about that. The, uh, what we will have to, that is going to affect until July, but what this commission needs to think about is when we want to do it. Beginning of the meeting, set aside the time for the agenda items, or you do it at the end, or as we mentioned, be a trial and error. But that will take effect in July, so long as we have it on the agenda, we are in compliance with the law. So I just want to make you aware of that, and then move on to the commission to, um, uh, we have some air port.
I should, uh, thank you, Judge, I'll 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 make a brief design on this, Chris. I made this, I've been doing this a lot of the time, but, uh, Chris did supply a feature of you with a Harvard County, uh, airport expansion project. Um, I know this has been a ongoing topic for, I don't know, ten, three, four years, for Harvard County and the, uh, airport expansion. Um, the committee has been working very hard on this, and, uh, also Sheldon Highson has been working even harder. Um, we started out with, uh, the project, and I'm just using around, I think, we started off the project in almost a forty million dollar project. And it was, a lot of it was fifty fifty grants. Uh, State of Tennessee really wants to see this happen, but we're one of the last airports in western city to, uh, revamp and, uh, build a, uh, terminal building. And due to a lot of that, so what the committee has done, and saving money, and this is going to involve the, uh, county highway department, Casey Swin. Uh, with him being involved in phase one, we've done this up in three phases, and this will not occur all at once. Uh, this will carry on through probably about three years, three fiscal years for this, uh, for this county. So in phase one, we have to do a entrance relocation and grading. Now, the reason we have to do that entrance relocation is because we have certain laws that we have to abide by, by the, uh, Tennessee Airmates. About setbacks for the terminal building, we're not in compliance now. Uh, the April is not in compliance, and U-TAX, the way it would have to be put into play, and that's going to make our old terminal building too close to the approach. So phase one is, it was done across probably, case, I think that was around, we started talking about a hundred and ninety thousand dollars, we may not get on that conversation, but. With the county's assistance on this, uh, we're looking at about a ninety thousand dollar cost, and of course, that would be made in, uh, ninety-five five grants. So we're looking at about four thousand dollars for the county, or it was gonna be about a forty-five thousand dollar cost to the county. Moving on. And that that's supposed to be start, okay, we talked about this earlier, the end of July, August, is that that range?
He said as soon as he gets the contract, he's achieving, he's saying, I'm not, which he said is about a month away.
Okay, so that's phase one, and that's what we're talking about here this fiscal year, about four thousand dollar cost to the county for that relocation. Uh, going into phase two, we've got site prep, and under site prep, we're looking at, uh. We're looking at moving fences, there's a lot of dishes gotta be moved, uh, there's a lot of dirtwork's gotta be done, uh, there's a lot of, uh, electrical issues gotta be addressed. Uh, it just goes on and on, I can't get a hold of it, but it was about a, uh, one point two billion dollar cost at one time. With, uh, with the assistance and a lot of talk with the committee and cutting backs of things, uh, we're looking at about a, a, a hundred thousand dollar cost to site prep. And get ready for the, uh, terminal building. Uh, with that being said, we're probably looking at that every fiscal year, uh, twenty-four, twenty-five, and that costs the county, uh, would be forty thousand dollars for an eight hundred thousand dollar project. Five percent, and a lot of these, like I said before, they went from fifty fifty, and now they're all ninety-five five. So two years ago, the county's looking at probably about a one point five million dollar cost out of their pocket, right in the pocket on a three million dollar project. Uh, so I'll move on to the, uh, terminal building, terminal building is the, uh, is the most expensive on the list. It it involves, uh, a lot of engineering, uh, a lot of update that will carries well into the future. Uh, the terminal building, uh, cost estimate is one point three, and this again was a fifty fifty back a year ago, even, that's closer. Now, with the state and, uh, working with the state Airmates, we're looking at a five percent match, and that would be sixty-seven thousand three hundred and forty. Now, with the state and, uh, working with the state air bodies, we're looking at a five percent match, and that would be sixty-seven thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars, and that would be in the third fiscal year from now. So, it's not all in the kids at one time, if it was, we're looking at a total match for a, over an eight, I said, a one point three, or eight hundred. Looking at world of two million dollars, and the county will be out of pocket, a hundred eleven thousand dollars, divided over three fiscal years, and you see, that's probably going to have sixty-seven thousand, forty thousand dollars. Um, like I say again, this, this is something that the State of Tennessee wants to happen, and they, they really proved that by, by letting us use a lot of funds that was not theirs from before, such as our, uh, that was under, uh, that was on their N P D's before, you couldn't use a lot of N P D's, that's non-primary entitlements, and that account is a, is an account that we need to spend down, make a cost, we have the conversation on this, this is an account that, that the state puts in about fifty thousand dollars a year, and, uh, a lot of times, we've been caught by spending any of that money, and that money would revert to other counties. So now, we've got a good plan about updating the lighting system and using those N P D's, using some of those N P D's to, uh, help out with these, uh, grants, uh, the lighting especially, because a lot of this lighting is nineteen-sixties lighting at the airport. The runway lights replaced in nineteen sixty, taxiway lights was late, early seventies, so these N P D's, they've got a good, uh, place to go with them now, we won't be losing, letting the money revert back to other counties and things. So, pretty much, uh, I'd like to open up the questions for commissioners now, and, uh, see what everybody has to say about our plan for the hard candy airport.
Commissioner, let me ask you a question, uh, part of it later on, in the phases will be, well, later in phase after that apron, then it will be towards teahangers, and which will be a red one?
Teahangers are the, yeah, teahangers are the lowest priority of the State of Tennessee, because they're accounting for everything, right?
Yeah.
Okay, and so that's why they're low priority, they will help on them, but before they will assist you on any teahangers, and I've spoken with a lot of, uh, folks, my, my, around the area, you cannot give a teahanger anywhere far to the west of the city, they're awful, and they're a good money generators, but. For the State of Tennessee to kick in money for teahangers, we, we have to do all this first. But they're not gonna give us teahangers, and we have an outdated airport, it is lighting to, and, uh, we just gotta get it up to board. So, great news on that, about ninety-five, uh, five percent grants, tremendous saving to this county. And we will have a, up-to-date new facility, great terminal building, I think a lot of you were supplying those, uh, budget plans, uh, last, last year, when we first started, about the placement of the terminal buildings and, uh, roads and all the infrastructure going down there, so, great news for us.
I need Chris to, hold on, forward, commission question. Commissioner, do you answer for a, uh, open?
Well, what I would like to ask is, uh, a, a motion that, uh, this commission is good with these numbers that have been presented, and it's a plan that has been presented, uh, for the, uh, to carry on the project. We're just talking about four thousand this year, and I will present the following fiscal year, and so on, and so forth.
So, Lou.
Second.
Hey, we have a motion, here's our project, that's a motion and second, by commission, right? Discussion on the motion. Same, uh, we need, uh, do we need, now, cut, we need roll, in that place, yes, man, we roll a couple of minutes, man.
Fayon?
Yes.
Bumper? No, sorry. DeBarry?
Yes.
Gillum?
Yes.
Grantum?
Yes.
Ansley?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Kennamore?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Lanier?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Sane?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Vickers?
Yes.
What was it? Yes, sir, sir, uh, to miss, fellow commissioners, one thing, one bit of information I meant to share, uh, just so you would all be in the know, when we were working on this budget, uh, we tried to look at every aspect of, of county business, and, uh, obviously, Mayor Pulse is aware, and we've been working together on this, but I wanted elected officials to be aware, obviously, delicate officials to be aware, uh, put his public record. But any time we're voting, oh, as far as our business is concerned, we still owe eighteen million dollars on our CJC. For those who didn't know, and I, I didn't even know, and I don't think, we, we, that's one thing we, we found out as we were working, uh, you know, if it's fifteen, sixteen, seventeen years old, so there's been a lot of interest up front, sir.
What was the original cost, wasn't it like fifteen million dollars?
We've spent, we've been, we've been paid on it for fifteen years, and we. Correct. We're getting hoed somehow.
Well, wasn't the tag, wasn't the tag, that increase in our tags back many years ago, or that? Or no? Yes? I mean, that's, that's the reason.
I thought, yeah. Registration went up, was paid for the T S.
Hey, on the note, listen, I mean, there was a refinancing of the note into two notes, that should supposedly save us close to one million dollars over the span of loans, uh, but I did check with Miss Linda, uh, those rates are locked in, uh, I know the interest rates have been, you know, jumping around, the rates we have are locked in, uh, and, and one note versus the other, we're paying a lot more principal than, than one of them, pretty much just paying the interest. But in saying that, our hopes moving forward, uh, obviously, we had a, a reappraisal year, um, that was difficult to explain to the public, for, for Josh, for the mayor, uh, for us, I don't know how many colleagues I have, I have several visitors at my business, their home colleagues, um, but hopefully, moving forward, we're gonna have some more revenue coming in, we're going, we do have school loans being paid off, there's another one to be paid in, uh, twenty-eight, and hopefully, we can move some more funds to debt service to, to try to start paying that principal down. But that's all public knowledge, just work, if you learn where, there it is.
Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner. The last thing I have, I see, Judge Dick is not here, uh, the last thing I have, uh, we need to put out the bids, we've got an issue, uh, and we've got several units down on criminal justice, and many of you know that's, uh, as we, a little too early, there's restricted funds, but we put out the bids, we had one that turned into bid, S M R, so it's actually coming to put the, uh, the units in court house. But, uh, their proposal, um, of course, one of the units is a twenty-ton unit, uh, but they had adjusted theirs down, uh, and they were attached to new trains, and, um, three hundred and ten. We have that in restricted funds, they're gonna have to, uh, control, uh, really control those units, and then replace these eight units, and Terry, when is the, when is the lead time on that, for the thing, we have a couple of things to do on, on the side of the county, but is it within the next three weeks?
You got it.
Then start?
Yeah.
Okay.
The, when I issue the P O, in two to three weeks, I don't think it's gonna start.
Because it goes into the next fiscal year, technically, you could either come right from, from that restricted fund now, or you start it again, and do it from that, from that, uh, July the first, either one of them will go back to that restricted fund, so, um, anyway, I just wanted to know about that.
So, so they have the units to, within three weeks?
Well, that's what they're gonna start on, they have two, I think they'll be starting on two units, and then, is it four units in?
Two to three weeks, they'd be starting from the beginning forward to the end.
So, we're, we'll be moving forward with that project, um, that's gonna come out of restricted funds, we did do the bid process, and we only had one bid, um, well, I did a formal vote on that, since we had one bid, and the person who answered would accept that, I really would like approval from the commission, if that fits. Yeah, I don't think so, to move forward.
Can, can follow the recommendation, but.
We did. And from the budget committee to agree that, yes, sir, Commissioner.
And I noticed they're gonna replace curbs on the units, do you happen to know, and I didn't see anything, are they going to reflash all those curbs, tying them, from the old routes into new routes?
Reflash, I believe, is part of it, Terry, is whether, from what I understand.
From what they have said, when they start, that they finish, that includes everything, ripcord, everything cleaned up, you'll never know they've been there or not.
Yeah.
I didn't, I didn't see that, I was just wondering.
Well, if I could, when they came across the recommendation, it could, we could have the motion to set this.
Second.
First and second zones forward, any discussion? Same, now, you know, move forward, we need a roll call, we have access from another two shifts, that's coming from restricted funds, onto our, if we could, now, cut, please.
Fayon?
Yes.
DeBarry?
Yes.
Gillum?
Yes.
Grantum?
Yes.
Ansley?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Kennamore?
Yes.
Lake? Lanier?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Sane?
Yes.
Vickers?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passed. Uh, Judge Dick is not here tonight, and then, uh, do you have any updates, anything, say, that you need to discuss?
No, I just, uh, last, last month, they discussed voting on the judicial commissioner, and the judge had proposed, planned to cut out drug phone, but he couldn't do that, so they're not giving judicial commission, uh, for Judge Dick.
Please move on, this is all, those, those particular things. Um, next commission meeting, July the eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, and, uh, I would like to say real quick, um, on the litter, thank you for what you do, and, and people have been asking about this, are there any districts that, that the commissioners have, within their districts, had a cleanup that? And I've asked people to call, if there are any major commissioners, to have that as well, so, hopefully, we get that done. Um, if anything else, we will have a motion for adjournment, and with public forum, we'll put it in.
So, Lou, so, Lou, second.
I'll make favor, I'm setting out, now, we need to have public forum, anybody would like to speak on any, uh, if we, yes, our seats come through, this microphone here, and if you would station that, and we will, start our public comments. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. A couple of things that have been, uh, watered around online, and the other night, we got a meeting, and, uh, Mr. Pulse commented that, uh, they were trying to find, uh, good money dollars for the county, I'm sure everybody in the D L S and all of us, we know, we all owe two more good money dollars to the county. And, the way that we do that, boys, is we're gonna break businesses, and our expanded businesses that we have here, and that sounds pretty simple, I've had experience in, uh, in a lifetime of career, and counseling people, primary franchise owners, of what to look like, look for, when they go into a community, and some of the thing, one of the things that was really nice and kind of strange, on the front end, to look at the financial condition of that community, uh, who founded, uh, this is in the food industry, and that sometimes, service, city services can suffer, which will affect the profitability, or sometime even the survival rate of, of the unit. So that brings us back to the problem here, we've got a large cloud, you were mentioning earlier, hanging over, over this county, and the federal lawsuits, they have, that's it. It's not getting cheaper, if we put it on, I had, I had the opportunity to witness what happens when people are in violation of federal labor laws, and two different cases, one, I was the captain of the vehicle, and said, yeah, I did have, I was on, and, and it would make everybody white, basically, they don't, and he went on to fight the duty one. The second case I got, seeing this one, for trying to help you, well, he just thought that he was smarter than everybody else, and just by power, his personality, he convinced the federal courts, that he didn't know it. Well, what he didn't quite realize, and I'm sure that the attorney's gonna, gonna say this, is sometimes, the penalty, depending on the way everything's structured, can be two times or three times of what the actual judicial penalty code, uh, fees on. Well, that's when his family lost a spectacular success in twenty, twenty franchise in Central Florida, all the calls of extreme humor. Let's get this thing settled, we don't, don't cloud anything over this like that, I know I did remember my personal, and I'm sure y'all don't either, but here's a problem, we, and y'all from the people in the county, I heard, I heard a nasty rumor, I hope this one, or I'm really, but I actually heard that there was at least one commissioner that said he would never, ever vote for a resolution or a settlement on these lawsuits, it was bankrupting the county. Uh, well, leadership is tough, though, I got it, there's nothing for you, sitting up here, but it surely will, I got that, I understand that, you know, and I feel sorry, it's, we, I appreciate the work y'all, and that vote, I got, that was impressive, but the thing, what it is, if you stand your position, is it's surely not a seriously negotiated case, then your every move, your fiduciary responsibility is, is, is commission. And, besides that, any of you want to just look at it, say, well, okay, we'll let somebody else take care of it, I think there's a, a pretty basic thing, that, to work on a position of that, quite frankly, I consider this to be cowardice, and I'm really too old that that's not the case, senior commissioners out there, are we gonna, yes, please, consider, so we can get this thing done and over with, we're tired of it, and we just want to see some leadership. Now, appreciate your time, and I'll be with you, thank you, sir. Anybody else? Sir, you're coming to, are you coming to the podium?
Yes, sir.
Speak, yes, sir. Please, uh, station that, and please speak.
I was spent, sir.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, I would like, uh, to pronounce Obama Highway on my street, falling thirty-five, by a new gas corro, I would like to know, what would I have to do to have that street cleaned up? Because if you don't take a ride down, and wipe the new gas corro, from Union Spring Road, back to White Tennessee, it's a disgrace.
Yes, sir.
If you just look at the community, and hide paper, and ball, and stuff, or throw over the street like that.
Yes, sir.
I feel very bad about that, so I just wanna raise your attention, what would I have to do to try to get this cleared up?
You just did, interesting.
Thank you.
Let me tell you, I was informed of that, uh, just yesterday, and, uh, and, but, but our sheriff here is on the litter grant corporate, he will take trust deeds, and, uh, he will give the sheriff here, and take that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
Alright, if there's no one else, we will adjourn, thank you so much.